It is seven o'clock on Tuesday, July 16th. I'm calling the regular planning board meeting to order for the town of Batavia. Please stand and pledge their flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call please, Kim.
Paul Marquesi.
Here.
Paul McCullough.
Here.
Don Partridge.
Here.
Jonathan Long. Steve Tanner. Brooks Holly.
Here.
Brittany.
Here.
Mike Dana.
Here.
Kathy.
Yes. Our two alternate members will be voting members tonight in the place of the two members that couldn't be here. Did everyone look at the minutes from June 18th? Is there any dissent or corrections? Motion by Paul Marquesi to approve, seconded by Mike. On favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Usually you do it, Paul. Usually you do it. Okay, this time now on our agenda allows for public comments on anything that is on the agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak tonight? Are you here to speak?
I am not.
You are not, okay. Okay, not seeing anyone to speak, we'll go on to our next thing. If someone comes in and does want to speak on the agenda, we will allow them a couple minutes. Okay, first agenda item is an application for construction of a Verizon cell tower on the Wilkinson Road in the town of Batavia. Tonight, we have to do the secret of site plan and the special use permit. And we have-
Good evening, Robert Burgdorf in the law room, Nixon Teabody here tonight in behalf of Verizon Wireless.
Thank you. Okay, first thing we have to do is declare ourselves lead agency for the seeker. We sent out the request for lead agency on June 8th, so we're in plenty of time to do it. And we had our public hearing. So I would take a motion for declaring us lead agency.
I'll make the motion.
By Paul McCullough, seconded by Brooks. Roll call please.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, our usual procedure for the seeker, the seeker is the environmental statement that we have investigated all of the anything that could affect the environment with this project. And our usual way of doing that is we have a lead person read it. Everyone has had it at home, looked at the first part, and we will, he will give his answer. If you don't like it, or if you want to add something, or if you have a question, we'll do it at this time. Is that agreeable to you?
Yes, we do have the answers listed, and I'm happy to answer any questions on any of them.
Okay, well, I'm sure Paul looked at that when you read it.
Looking it over.
So I don't know if you want to go to any particular one.
Well, we go through every one, and if it's a yes or no, it's just yes or no. If there's a question, we'll ask you.
Okay.
Number one, impact on land. Proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. With everything going, all the earlier questions underneath it, I'm declaring it a no or small impact may occur. Impact on geological features. The proposed action may result in the modification or destruction of or inhibit access to any access to any unique or unusual landforms at the site. No or small impact may occur. Impacts on surface water. The proposed action may affect more and more wetlands or other surface water bodies. No or small impact may occur. Impact on groundwater. The proposed action may result in new or additional use of groundwater or may have the potential to introduce contaminants to the groundwater or aquifer. No or small impact may occur. Impact on flooding. The proposed action may result in development on land subject to flooding. No or small impact may occur. Impacts on air. The proposed action may include a state-regulated air emission source. No or small impact may occur. Impact on animal, plants and animals. The proposed action may result in a loss of flora or fauna. No or small impact may occur. Number eight, impact on agricultural resources. The proposed action may impact agricultural resources. That would be a no or small impact may occur. Impact on aesthetic resources. The land use of the proposed action are obviously different from or are in sharp contrast to current land use patterns between the proposed project and a scenic or aesthetic resource. That one, I selected no or a small impact will occur because there are other poles and telephone poles and objects in the area. Number 10, impact on historic or archaeological resources. The proposed action may occur in or adjacent to historic or archaeological resources. No or small impact may occur.
Did we get a study done on that?
Yeah, the engineers who fill this out, they do a preliminary study, and they look at circles and squares, basically, they have state resources they look at, and they take a first pass. And if there's no indication that there's anything there, then it's clear. If there is an indication, then there can be a field study, but there needs to be an indication first. Not unlike a phase one and phase two for contamination. But here, there was no indication that there would be anything to do any kind of soil tests or anything to dig for.
Thank you.
Number 11, impact on open space and recreation. The proposed action may result in a loss of recreational opportunities or a reduction of an open space resource as designated in any adopted municipal open space plan. No or small impact may occur. Impact on critical environmental areas. The proposed action may be located within or adjacent to a critical environmental area. No or small impact may occur. Impact on transportation. The proposed action may result in a change to existing transportation systems. No or small impact may occur. Impact on energy. The proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy, and that would be a no or small impact may occur. Impact on noise, odor, or light. The proposed action may result in an increase in noise, odors, or outdoor lighting. I selected no or small impact may occur, even though there's going to be a strobe on, isn't there?
No, this is not required to have.
Does not require a strobe?
Anything under 200 feet.
200, even the flight plan or the airports or anything like that?
Unless it's in the approach slope, and that has not been flagged.
Okay. All right. Impact on human health. The proposed action may have an impact on human health from exposure to new or existing sources of contamination. No or small impact may occur.
I'd like to just discuss that for a minute because we haven't had people come in and were concerned about their health and about what this is going to, how this is going to affect their lives. And she's sent some questions in. Did Mr. Lust give you a list of the questions?
Are these the ones we responded to on May 15th? Or really subsequent to that?
No.
I don't get it.
I don't see that. That was a question from the engineering side, right?
It was not from the engineering side, you said.
Pardon me?
It was not from the engineering letter we got, correct?
No.
I'm happy to discuss that, though, if you'd like. So the concern you're saying was written in is that people are concerned, have a health concern over potential-
About how close it's located to a home?
Yeah, in terms of the emissions.
Yes.
Okay. Couple things with that. The first is that that is preempted by federal law. So as a matter of law, a local municipality can't even consider that. It's been completely preempted from any consideration at the local level. But I don't like to leave it there because I don't want people to be concerned there actually could be a problem. And the way it's been best explained to me is that what is being transmitted from these towers is a radio signal. Same thing that's been around since the 1920s, 1930s, it's a radio signal. In fact, in some of the various, some of the frequencies, they had to kick off the old UHS channels to use it. So it's just a radio signal. The only difference is that it is broadcasting at an extremely, extremely weak power level because it can only go, depends on the cell, mile, mile and a half, maybe two, less in a city. So it's extremely, extremely weak. But it's the same thing you're getting off a television, radio station, although those are operating in megawatts sometimes, millions of watts, broadcasting all over the place. So that's the answer, that this fully complies with all FCC regulations for power and frequency. And as a layperson, the best way it's been explained to me as a layperson is if you're really concerned about this, you would never use a walkie-talkie, you would never use and wouldn't have television stations, wouldn't have radio stations, and so forth. So I hope that helps explain.
Anyone else have a question on this? Go ahead, Paul, thank you.
All right. Impact on human health. I selected no or small impact may occur. Consistency with community plans. The proposed action is not consistent with the proposed action is not consistent with adopted use plans.
It is consistent, so it's a no.
Yeah, it's a no.
We always stumble on that one.
It's worded wrong.
Yeah.
Consistency with the community character. The proposed project is inconsistent with the community character. That I selected as a no. With that, I declare this a negative declaration of the seeker.
Thank you. Okay, we have we have a
Motion on the floor.
For a negative declaration by Paul McCullough. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mike Dana. Roll call, are you ready?
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. We had plenty of time to read over, and you gave us a lot of information. That was very good, thank you. So you, so far then, we have done the seeker, and now we will look at the special use permit to allow it to go up at that particular site. Would you like to tell us a little bit about?
Sure, let me, that's procedure, I just want to make sure that takes care of secret. But Ag Data notices went out, so there was notice back for the public hearing. So hopefully, I just wanted to check that off the list procedurally. And county review.
I couldn't find the county review answer. Does anyone have it?
Or 30, has 30 days elapsed? Either way, it's 30 days elapsed since it was sent to county. I just want to make sure both of those things were checked out procedurally.
I know it went to the county, and they normally make a recommendation to us. I could not find the recommendation, I don't know if I-
Is it about 30 days since it was sent?
Oh, yes.
Okay, then that takes care of that. And I assume that back when we had the public notice, I didn't check on it that night, but I assume we had the Ag Data notices and the public notices withheld properly. And if that's the case, then we have cleared all the procedural things. And now we're in a position to get into the substance, which is the special permit and site plan approval. And as the board made recall from last time, we went through the need for the facility, that's Exhibit F. And they got us slowed down, we threw as much of this information as anybody wants. Let me just set it out largely, because I don't want to take more of your time than is necessary. But it's explained in there why we need to be here. The service deficiencies we're trying to solve. The extreme lack of flexibility as to where you can geographically place these and make them work because they all have to be spaced in a way that they work off all the towers around them because they hand off the signal. If you're too far away, gaps, if you're too close, it interferes. So it's really, I mean, it's tough for the engineers to design these towers. But you can see from the materials in here how it's placed where it is so that it kind of meshes nicely. And that was on page 18 and 19, if you've got it. Kind of shows pretty well what we're trying to cover. I'm sorry, page 18 and 19 of Exhibit G. And if you're still inclined to look at that, or I'm sorry, Exhibit F. And I'll just hold it up, might be easier for people. They're showing existing coverage from surrounding sites, and then after the green is what's coming from this site. You can see how that fills that, this hole, which is what they're trying to fill, and to get seamless coverage running through this area. And we show with other frequencies as well, but that one demonstrates it pretty well. So we explain the need, we explain the search area, limited geographic area where we can be, all the different places we've looked, why we came to this one, either because the others weren't available, or in the end, this was the one that made the most sense from a land use standpoint. And then we went over the site, 150-foot monopole at 9221 Wilkinson Road, 100 by 100-foot least parcel, this is all in the site plan. Typical fence compound, it's a small area, there's an equipment shelter. The signal's running, the equipment shelter's processed by the equipment, runs up the tower, and then, of course, broadcasting comes back the same way, back down to the equipment, over the landline that goes anywhere in the world. Not a lot to the facility itself, as you can see. It's just a small fencing compound to equipment, and of course, the monopole itself. I think we've answered all the other questions back in May 15th for the engineering questions other than now being in front of this board, hopefully for approval for the special permit and site plan. I don't think there's anything left to cover. But I'm happy to go back into any of those pieces the board would like, but I don't want to go on in an area you don't want to go on.
Yeah, I reviewed it again today, especially Exhibit D, which answered all my questions for the special use permit. So if everyone has had the time to review it, but if you have questions, please ask them now.
No, it's really needed out there. I have almost no coverage in my house.
Okay, Exhibit B, I've entertained a motion for the special use permit approval. One minute for Steve, do you have anything before we go on?
I mean, I don't know if you want to make it a condition of it, but we will need the maintenance and removal bond. So whether you do it with special use or the site plan, one or the other, or both.
We could do them together?
No, no, no.
No.
We still need the maintenance and removal bond.
That was part of the engineering things, right? This is part of the request from engineering questions?
Yeah, it's part of the code.
Yeah.
So whether you want to make the special use permit contingent upon receipt of the maintenance and removal bond.
Okay.
Or you could do that same thing with the site plan, one or the other, or you could do it on both.
I would make a motion on that.
Did you get that, Kim? Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion was made by, by?
Brett.
Brett.
Seconded by Mike?
Paul.
Mike.
Who seconded it, Paul seconded it? Okay, now we can do roll call, please.
Brittany.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Mike Dana.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, now we have our special use permit approved, and we will go on to our site plan. And the site plan, you certainly gave us a lot of information on that, too. Does everyone look at that?
I'll make a motion on the site plan.
Motion by Paul McCullough, seconded by Brooks Holly. Any questions? Kim, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, roll call please.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, so you'll be working with our engineering staff for their final approval and everything.
Great. Okay, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
My pleasure.
Okay, next, we have an application by Genesee Biogas to construct a renewable gas facility at the egg park in the town of Batavia. They need to have the seeker done and the site plan reviewed. So we will first, we sent out on June 8th a request to be lead agency. We didn't get any responses negative, so I would like to have a motion to declare lead agency for the seeker tonight. Who's that? Paul Marquesi?
Paul.
Paul McCullough? Paul McCullough seconded. Roll call please.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Don.
Epstein.
Kathy.
Yes. Now, Don will not be participating in any way on this particular item. We're lucky tonight to have Matthew Steril. And I say lucky because this is something a little different than we've done before, and he's taught us a lot, we've learned, and we're ready to do the seeker, I believe.
Great. So thanks, everybody, Matthew Steril, Philip Slade, all the counsel to the board. I've been working closely with Steve Mountain, as well as the applicant, as well as the board on this application for a couple of months now. So there's two resolutions before you. There's a site plan resolution we'll talk about later, but first up is seeker. So there's a seeker resolution, and what's different about this than the seeker you just went through is you did a GEIS for the egg park, a generic environmental impact statement. Now, when you have a subsequent project, like the biogas project, you have to ask yourself, okay, does this fit within the box of what we intended to review when we did the GEIS? And you've got four options. You can either say, yes, this is exactly what we thought would go in the egg park, so our finding statement in our GEIS covered it perfectly. You can say, you know, in our finding statement, we didn't say this kind of facility, but we analyzed it in the GEIS, so that's okay. You could say, we never really anticipated this kind of project, but it doesn't create any new adverse impacts that weren't already looked at. Or you could say, we didn't anticipate it, and it creates all sorts of new adverse impacts that we didn't look at in the GEIS. And the draft resolution that's in front of you is option three there, where you say, you know what, the GEIS didn't necessarily think we're going to have exactly this kind of project going in there. But when you look at the project, and you look at its utility demands, when you look at its site plan layout, when you look at the kinds of impacts that it's going to have, there's no new impacts from this project. There's nothing unique about this project that wasn't looked at, at least generically, in the environmental impact statement that was done. So this resolution, what it does is it goes through and it lays out the reasons that support that determination. It analyzes all the areas of environmental concern that are laid out here in the GEIS to show that this board, if it chose to adopt the resolution, had taken a hard look at the environmental issues, identified the relevant areas of environmental concern, and then issued a recent determination in accordance with seeker. So in a nutshell, that's the resolution. There's a lot in there, there's a lot of detail. Thanks to Steve Mountain and the rest of the town engineering staff for assisting and reviewing that. The applicant has had a chance to review the seeker determination and had no comments on the seeker determination. So with that, it's open to the board for any questions, comments, concerns, or if you'd like to, you can adopt the resolution.
We have had the resolution for several days, plus we, you've just summarized it pretty well. So I think it's sufficient not to have to read it. We will have it here at the town hall, and we can have it posted on the website, can't we, Steve?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Yeah, yeah, just for a month or so, in case somebody would like to look at it. Okay. Questions from the board? We've talked to you so often. Everybody satisfied with the seeker, with the resolution?
I'll just add, the seeker cooks in some of the conditions that are part of the site, the draft site plan resolutions, all those conditions that are extra protective of the environment and the community are cooked into the seeker as well. So we'll talk about those in more detail, but just so you know, those are cooked into this resolution.
In addition to that, you know, all of the record of all the reviews and correspondences back and forth that the applicant has addressed and all the concerns that had been previously laid out and either addressed them in the SEAR report that they provided or by a product or a project chain. So those are all included also.
Okay. I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve of, now, do we call it a negative declaration?
It is, by the way. Yeah, that's what it's called. And the same way that the DEC made that one form very confusing, the language in the regulations here is confusing, that technically, it's a negative declaration, even though it's a negative declaration on top of a GEIS, on top of a positive declaration.
Okay.
But you can call it a negative declaration.
That's all, Paul. I would entertain a motion on a negative declaration for the biogas seeker. Brooks Holly moved it?
I'll second.
Paul McCullough seconded. Ready?
Ready.
Okay.
Brooks.
Yes.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Don.
Epstein.
Brittany.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Wow, this is a long time coming. We've been working on this, it's very interesting, and now we know what to do if this comes up again.
I'm always just a phone call away if you need help.
It's been great working with it, but we're not done yet. Now we've got the site planned.
On to the next one. Would you like me to go through the site plan resolution just quickly? Sure, so the site plan resolution, and I'll say, before we advance there, one of the things that we did in reviewing this project is, when we held the public hearing, we left the hearing open to give the applicant an opportunity to submit responses to the engineering department and their comments. And there's been quite a bit of back and forth, that's all part of the record for this application. So one thing, just, it's a little formalistic, but if the board could entertain a motion to close the public hearing, just so that that component of it is wrapped up and done before we go into the resolution, I don't see anyone here from the public who would otherwise-
Yes, if anyone that wishes to speak before we close the public hearing. Okay, motion by?
Motion.
Who said that first? Brittany seconded by, Mike? Roll call please.
Brittany, yes. Mike.
Yes.
Brooks.
Yes.
Don.
Epstein.
Paul McCullough.
Yes.
Paul Marquesi.
Yes.
Kathy.
Yes. Okay, the public hearing is now officially called.
I wouldn't be a lawyer if I didn't do that one little overly formalistic administrative stuff, but thank you for that. So, turning to the site plan resolution. So this resolution more or less just walks through the code and walks through the requirements of the code for a site plan and explains the applicability of the code to the project and how it's in conformance with the same in this current draft. Of particular note is Section 3. Section 3 includes all of the approval conditions. And these conditions were drafted in connection with Steve Mountain, the engineering department, worked with me, worked with the applicant on these. I'll note that there is one correction, it's just a typo, but at the in condition number three, it says applicant will pave the entire tank storage area, and then goes on, you can strike entire tank storage area. They're not going to pave that because they're going to be lining that area instead. So that's just a typo that I just wanted to note for the benefit of the applicant and pointed that out. There's also a section at the end of Section 2 that mimics that same language. They're not going to be paving and lining, they're just lining the tank storage area, just for the sake of clarity.
Okay, and it's agreed upon?
That's agreed upon. And these conditions were, I'll say, there was a lot of back and forth over the text of these conditions. The applicant, over the last several months, has worked closely with the engineering department to frame them up and get to the point where the language is what it is now. It was provided to the applicant in advance at this meeting at their request, so they could have a chance to review. So we do appreciate the comments that we received on that condition. The conditions, there's six of them in place. One of them is deals with the decommissioning plan or decommissioning bond, that one of those will be submitted for the facility. There is one that a host community agreement will be entered into with the town. There is the issue dealing with the paving and the lining to ensure that the areas surrounding the driveway, the parking area, the storage tanks and whatnot are appropriately lined and paved. There is the possibility in the future that a water line servicing the site will be expanded, depending on what else happens at the egg park. So the applicant has agreed that if that is expanded in the future, they'll pay their proportionate cost associated with that expansion. Same thing with the existing gravity sewer main is condition number five. And finally, condition number six, that the plans are subject to final review and approval of the detailed plans by the town engineer. So those are the six conditions that we framed up for the approval of this. condition number six, that the plans are subject to final review and approval of the detailed plans by the town engineer. So those are the six conditions that we framed up for the approval of this. I will say that a number of the concerns that have been raised over the course of the several years that the application has evolved before this board, things like concerns about odor, there is, as this detailed with seeker resolution, a very detailed odor mitigation plan, there are requirements that they comply with those plans. Condition number one, the decommissioning bond and whatnot is, that condition is very clear, that the failure to adhere to their own, uh, project documents, things like their odor plan, things like other permits and approvals, if to be exact, needed from, for example, the DEC, the failure to adhere to those is a violation of that condition. So in essence, it's a compliance with all laws provisioned. The applicant's under an obligation to comply with all their approvals. Failure to do so would result in a problem where the town could enforce that as against the applicant. So I just want to give that added level of comfort to the board that that's cooked into this resolution. The only other administrative, uh, thing I would point out is that the GML 239M referral was made to the county back in December. The county came back with a recommendation with a modification, two modifications really. One is that they undertake a SWIP, which they're going to be required to do anyways because they're disturbing more than one acre. And then the second one has to do with the reporting of their waste stream to the county, um, which is cooked into, because that's something the county's required, it's cooked into an approval required under the site plan. So they did recommend approval with those two modifications. Those two modifications are consistent with your site plan approval draft resolution anyways. So unless the board has any questions, that's the resolution that's before the board.
Okay, well, Steve, are we ready?
If you're ready.
We're ready. Okay, I entertain a motion for, um, approval of the site plan.
I'll make the motion.
Paul Marquesi's making the motion.
I'll second.
Mike Dana seconded it. Roll call, please.
Paul Marquesi?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Brooks?
Yes.
Don?
Epstein.
Paul McCullough?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you to the applicants for all your hard work. Um, we've had questions going back and forth. Steve Mountain has been great on this, keeping us informed on everything. So this project, um, has been approved. Based on engineering approval. I almost forgot this.
And subject to the condition.